Call the October 16th, 2023 County Council Meeting to Order. At this time, I'll recognize the Honorable Bump Rotti for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear heaven and father, we thank you for allowing us to assemble once again. We come to you with humble hearts and minds. We ask that you keep in your prayers and your thoughts those near, far, and abroad, with those who are dealing with tumultuous instances or problems in their lives. We ask that you protect those men and women who are in our service, our service industry, our policemen, our firemen, our military. Lord, keep a special watch over those who are on the battlefields and finding themselves in harm's way. We ask that you watch over them and protect them. And once you've finished doing all that, remember us here in York County as we assemble tonight to do the will of the people. Lead us and guide us so that we can make the best informed decisions that we can to have the best impact on the many people that we represent here in York County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Our first item will be our Oath of Office for newly appointed Board and Commission members. At this time, if Jeffrey Lyon with Culture and Heritage Commission, District Four, and Joel Finch from Keep York County Beautiful, an at-large slot, if you are here, if you could please come forward and stand in front of the podium, you'll be met there with our county attorney, who will issue you the Oath of Office. And as you make your way here, we appreciate you being here tonight. We've got a small crowd, but we are very, very glad to see you here, and we appreciate the service that you give to York County. Thank you again, Mr. Lyon, for your service. At this time, we'll recognize Sheriff Tolson, who will come forward and give us the York County Sheriff's Office Annual Report.
Good evening. Like I should say, may it please the council. So, for the first time in seven years, I think I stand at the podium without asking for anything. I'm just going to give you some information, right? Yeah, that deserves applause, right? And I'll be brief, I'll be respectful of your time. I think each of you have this. If you don't, let me know, I'll give you one. This is significant to me because this is the first year that we've done this ever, I think, in the history of the sheriff's office. I think we're large enough now, and in the age of transparency, we want, this is going to be published to the public, but I wanted council to get the first look at it so that they can know what's going to go out to the public later this week. And it is just basically a snapshot of who we are, what our makeup is, and some general stats. And I'm not, since you have the packets, I'm just going to hit the highlights so that we can, again, in the interest of time. So, as we thumb through this booklet, it tells you a little bit about York, excuse me, about York County. We were established in 1786, and since 1786, I am the 34th sheriff. And I think that's a pretty remarkable number, 34 sheriffs since 1786. I can't do the math in my head right now, but we all know we have about 700 square miles, and we have a lot of waterway, and we are absolutely growing quickly. We're not, we're no longer a little old York County, and that is the challenge of the council, to manage that growth. And it's my challenge to make sure that all the people that live here, work here, play here, remain safe. So, as we flip on through, there is just a little makeup of our command staff and our leadership within the office, and then significant events. I will say that we, once again, were accredited by Calea, our accreditation, national accreditation body, for the fifth time, and we're proud to say that we continue to maintain that accreditation. It's very stringent, and we're proud that we continue to maintain that certification and that accreditation. Flipping over, I want to get into some of the stats. So, we have 300,000, around 300,000 people who reside in York County, but if you think about all of the events that go on within parks and rec, within the city, within Rockhill City, within now our county, as well as carowinds, that's certainly much more than 300,000. And last year, we had 68,000-plus calls for service. So, if you divide that into 300,000, we touched almost one of every four citizens or people that were in York County, and I think that's a significant number. Our violent crimes were a total of 325. Seven of those were homicides, and I would say that is a relatively low rate, given our proximity to the Charlotte metro region. And also, I would like to say that all of those homicides that we had in 2022 were acquaintance homicides. In other words, the perpetrator knew the victim, or the victim knew the perpetrator. So, we are not a county where, you know, you're afraid to go out and hike, you're afraid to go out and bike, you're afraid to just be out and about. Those, all of those homicides were, the victim and perpetrator were somehow related or acquaintances. Our violent crime took a 17% decrease in 2022, which I'm very happy about that. I think that our vigilant pursuit of drug traffickers is a big part of that. It always has been, and if you look at, and I'm not picking on Charlotte, but if you look, the numbers are the numbers. If you look at Charlotte's crime, violent crime rate versus our violent crime rate, being next-door neighbors, I'm very proud to say that our violent crime rate is relatively low, and that our residents can feel very safe in York County. Additionally speaking, our property crimes took a 9.4% decrease, and that, to me, is significant because in 20 and 21 during COVID, our property crimes decreased because people were at home, and that's where most property crimes occur, is that are at people's homes while they're away at work, and people were staying at home working. So, we have seen a steady decrease, but beyond COVID, now that people are back at work, we still experience a 9.4% decrease in property crime. That is a testament to our patrol division and our detectives. Patrol Division is very, very, very vigilant about keeping check on property. We have a very robust property check system where folks can leave the county on vacation and contact us and be put on the property crime watch list. We'll check their residence, or we'll check their business daily and have a presence in the area. Of the 2,640 property crimes, we were able to make 928 charges. So, that is about, by my numbers, about 40%. So, 40% of the time, we're able to make some sort of charge on a property crime. Now, that leaves 60% of the residents unhappy that we weren't able to make a charge on one of those property crimes, but I still think that that's a good number for us to be able to enjoy. Flipping over, this is the biggie for council budget. And again, I cannot say enough about the willingness and the cooperative nature that council has had with me, given me some leeway within my budget to be able to do the things to recruit, retain, train, equip our staff so that they can adequately protect our citizens in York County. That is a, that's an unheard-of type of situation and unheard-of relationship between an elected official within the county and council, and I certainly enjoy it, and I certainly believe that it pays dividends within our agency, and for that, I thank council. Our Enforcement Division, obviously, is the largest portion of our budget. Detention is 17 million of a total of 50, almost 51.2, or $51.1 million budget. 80%, 86% of detention cost is personnel. They operate on a very small operating budget. 59% of the enforcement side division is personnel, and of course, fleet management, maintenance agreements, software, body cams. We have a lot of, a lot more operating cost on the enforcement side, and I'm proud to say that in 2022, we were able to secure $2.3 million in grants, which is money that does not directly come from the county through the help of the federal government. On the next page, you'll see our breakdown of internal investigations. Those numbers, to me, are very low. In 2022, we had six Internal Affairs Investigations. Those are complaints of, well, you can see the different types of complaints, excessive use of force, conduct unbecoming, misconduct in office, conduct unbecoming. Two of those were unfounded. One was a two-part complaint, one was sustained, one was exonerated, and the other three were sustained. The significance in that, and to me, is that we are watching out within our own, within our own agency, within our own staff. Four sustained complaints out of six tells me that we are investigating our own fairly, and we're not turning a blind eye to things that we may not necessarily do right or quite simply do wrong. And when we have sustained investigations, discipline certainly follows. But six Internal Affairs Investigations over 68,000 contacts, I think, is a pretty good number. Our recruiting, we had 158 applicants, 41 made it to the testing phase, and out of those, 19 deputies were hired. I get a lot of questions about what we do to attract minorities in our agency and in law enforcement in general, and we do everything that we know to do to attract minorities. But I will tell you, I don't care what color you are, I don't care what gender you are, I don't care how you identify. If you want to be a police officer, and you can make it through our testing and background phase, I will hire you. It does not matter where you are as far as your gender, race, or orientation. And, you know, in this day and age of recruitment and retention crisis, we certainly want good men and women. We have a very stringent hiring process. That's why out of 158, only 19 were hired. I would rather have one good person, good deputy with integrity, honesty, and character than 40 that are marginal. And so, we will not let our standards go downward, as we've seen across the country where that has happened and bad things happen. We had over 30,000 hours of training and 1,040 hours of firearms training. If you flip the page, that's our Criminal Investigations Division. Those sort of mirror the stats that I talked about earlier. I will not go into that. And on page 12, our Uniform Patrol Division, as you can see, we give out about twice the number of warnings that we did in citations. We are not about writing tickets for the sake of writing tickets, and I ask that our officers use good discretion when they decide to cite somebody, and I think that reflects that of 9,415 warnings versus 5,300-plus citations. A sad statistic is 247 DUI charges. If you count, there's 252 workdays in a year of the five-day work week, so that is one a workday, and that is a significant number, and I pray that those numbers can go down. We'll talk about our efforts in traffic enforcement here just shortly. If you flip the page, we have a brand-new division called our Technical Services Division. Technology is a double-edged sword, as we all know. It's very helpful to us, but it's also very expensive and very manpower-intensive to do some of the things that we're able to do in our Cyber Crimes Division. As you can see, we examined, we examined 338 devices. Those are computers and phones mostly. Again, if you break the workweek down, there's 252 workdays in a workweek. We almost, if we work seven days a week, analyze one device a day. And you would think, Tom, you're a little bit more in the technology world, analyzing a device forensically is very, very intensive, and it takes sometimes days to download and be able to digest the information. But we are certainly not going to discontinue our pursuit of cybercrimes because a lot of times, children are the victims of those cybercrimes. Our DNA lab is in very, very, very good shape. I appreciate council support in supporting our DNA lab. We have a three-week, an average of a three-week turnaround on a DNA sample, and if we were relying on the state's lab, that is a six-to-nine-month turnaround rate. And when you're talking about property crimes, nine months of trying to find out if a sample of blood at a burglary, we all know that most people who commit burglaries don't commit one burglary. Most times, they're drug addicted, and that's fueling their crimes. And so, if you can get a turnaround time in three weeks versus nine months, how many burglaries have you prevented? And so, we appreciate our DNA lab, folks. They do a good job, and again, thank you support from the council for their support of our labs. Very, very important. Our K-9 unit, 323 tracking calls, 102 arrests. That's one out of every three, and I think that's a pretty good statistic. Our K-9 division is not only regionally known, but they are nationally known, and we host a K-9 school where we have had individuals come as far as from New Zealand to attend this school, and we host it every year, and I'm very, I'm very proud of that. It's very intense training, and our folks are very, very, very well-respected and well-known. I won't go over the SWAT team and crisis negotiation stats, other than to note that our crisis negotiations team had 11 call-outs last year, 11 successes. That means nothing bad happened. Most of the times, those are barricaded subjects, and it's a very volatile, dangerous situation, and our folks are very, very well-trained in de-escalation and being able to successfully negotiate those serious calls. Court security, those numbers were a little bit astonishing to me. 87,000 people came through the Moss Justice Center last year. 49,000 came through family court, and 22,000 came through the historic courthouse right here across the parking lot. We were, we were able, through our new equipment that we have recently been able to purchase, our scanning and screening equipment, we were able to seize 3,034 pieces of contraband, and that just makes the courthouses safer. We certainly will continue on those efforts. We booked 6,000 inmates last year. Some of you have been able to see the booking area, and I appreciate management's support. We have been in recent talks about the need for redoing and expanding our booking area because it is, it's just outdated, and it's very, very small, and at times, you know, the more booked the booking area gets, the more dangerous, quite simply, that it is. And so, we are in good talks with management on being able to revamp and, through capital projects, be able to revamp and have a new booking area, which is much, much safer, and will be much larger. And we're about through here, which we are. I will say that we transport a lot of folks out of the county. We're the medical, the mental transports. Mental health transports is on page 12. We conducted over 570 mental health transports. And whatever council can do to at least throw their support behind the state and the federal government, pouring more resources into our mental health would certainly be a tremendous help to us as an agency. When we have to transport mental patients out of county, sometimes it takes one and sometimes two of our officers off the streets, protecting our property and protecting y'all, and in essence, criminalizing mental crisis, which I don't believe we should do. And anything that the council could do to support our state legislators to pour some resources back into mental health treatment for our citizens is certainly appreciated and something that I have been really trying to get the word out to our legislators and to our public that we need those resources back. With that, that is a quick snapshot. You can keep those books. I wanted council to see this first before we published it this week, and I'm glad to take any questions.
Sheriff, first, I want to say thank you for giving us this information. There's a lot in here to digest. We know it's not an easy job. It's a very important job for our county. We're very fortunate to have you and your team, and I say "team" because I think those of us on council, I think most of us were able to come see your detention center. And I know one thing that I say to folks when I encounter them is, you have done a tremendous job building a team that backs each other and that backs our community, and I'm thankful for that and thankful for what you do for us. Do we have any questions or comments?
Tom, hang on, I'm sorry, councilman, I did one. Give me one second. In our demographics, I do want to say on page 10, our demographics within the office, that what you're seeing there only reflects the enforcement side's demographics. When you, and we don't have, we will have it next year, I don't know why it's not in here this year, when we do add in the detention side demographics, we nearly, to the T, mirror our county's demographics. And I'm proud of that statistic, that our staff mirrors our county demographics. What our, what our population in the county looks like is, in essence, what our staff looks like. And next year, we will, we will be able to demonstrate that in this report. And the second thing that I want to add is, it's mid-October, and this is your 2022 report. This took a long time because it was the first one, and we wanted it to look right, we wanted the accuracy certainly to be spot-on, and it took, it just took that long. And we are already, this is the template now, so we are already focusing on next year's 2023 report, which our goal is to have it out by February. So, we'll have this out, this information out earlier. Everybody wants information now, 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 and we want to have that information out, and so, it certainly will not be October of 2024 before anybody sees 2023's report. Councilman Aldette?
Yeah, first of all, this is fantastic. Absolutely great work, and the details are phenomenal. First of all, Sheriff Tolson, I want to thank you for Operation Diamondback and Operation March Madness and the impact that it's made. You know, you can see, looking at this here, where you've really drawn the line, and it's phenomenal work, so fantastic work. I also see the impact of ordinance changes such as encampment laws, panhandling laws where have been adjusted. I see that out there, and that's good news, and I applaud you for that. I do have a quick question. So, you know, the challenger on fentanyl and the challenges we see in the county, in all counties across the United States, are you, are your officers been involved in more or the need to use Narcan in a lot, a lot more instances lately on some calls, or are you seeing where you're trending up or down on that?
Well, we're trending up on our overdoses. We'll certainly hit over 100 this year of fatal overdoses that involve fentanyl. So, that's one every 3.6 days. Our use of Narcan has steadily increased, and that's, that's a good point. I need to write that down to have those stats because we certainly have those available. But we're seeing an uptick, and I will, I will say, we fought a three-year battle to get a trafficking fentanyl bill.
Yeah.
I think in one of the subcommittee hearings, four of the first five families who spoke to the subcommittee from York County. So, we certainly have a problem here. We seized 63 pounds of fentanyl about a year ago, enough to kill the state of South Carolina more than once, and we could only charge them the same amount as if you saw somebody on the streets with 10 pills. And our legislature did finally listen and created a bill that had some teeth in it, and those individuals who traffic large amounts of fentanyl, which, you know, can kill a large number of people, they are facing some very, very serious and stiff penalties for doing that, and that, that's not the be-all and-all, but it certainly will send a message to those who are trafficking in large amounts of fentanyl that we're not going to tolerate.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Rotti?
I just want to make a quick comment that, you know, I can appreciate a report like this because it's very detailed, and some of the things that's in here, this, this probably needs to be on the front page so everybody knows what our sheriff and our deputies are doing, what our patrolmen, you know, it's very detailed. So, hopefully, some of our good friends over at, with the media picks up on kind of what you're going to put out to the public later on this week because it really, it would have been easy for our sheriff to come here and say, oh, we, we got to have this, we need more money, you know, things are bad, you know, buying into the whole national narrative about law enforcement. But obviously, recruitment is always going to be up there on the plate, but to hear how we're operating as an organization, I think it's some good information that you're about to put out to the public.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate you being here.
Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
You too. Moving now to our public forum session. We don't have any public hearing items tonight. We only have a couple of folks that signed up, so we should have plenty of time. When I call your name, if you'll come forward and state your name, give your address before you get started. Scott Coconhour. I'm getting good at that name.
Hey, everybody. Scott Coconhour, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood in downtown Fort Mill. Hey, I would like to apologize for y'all when I spoke last time, my last 10 seconds there, I got way too aggressive. I want to apologize to everyone from that standpoint. And of course, I want to give you your football update. It's homecoming at Catawba. Indiana's coming to town, so unfortunately, Catawba's probably, Catawba Ridge is probably not going to make the playoffs. But a big game Friday night, I know, South Point, Northwestern, they should be 1-2 in 4A in our conference, have home games. York's kind of locked into 3, Indiana and Lancaster. And a big shout-out to Fort Mill High School. They won a conference game for the first time in a few years, and good chance of making the playoffs along with Nation Ford, and then Rock Hill and Clover probably going to play for 1-2 in 5A. So, there's your football update for you. So, I spoke in front of Fort Mill Town Council Monday about Highway 21 bypass in the Fort Mill area, having that reduced down to 45 miles per hour. There's spots in there to 45, spots that are 55. So, I spoke with Debbie, we're going to ask council for support on having that whole, that whole area changed to 45. We get a lot of foot traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic, especially at the Harris Street, the 21 interchange, there's a lot of Fort Mill Housing Authority, and also the high schools there, Harris Street Park. You get to the Peach Stand, there's a lot of traffic with the new hospital and everything on that line. So, I believe Fort Mill Town Council's going to be on board with it, and I'll also speak with the Housing Authority and the school district and other property owners. So, half of that road's kind of in the town and in the county. So, anyway, that's what we had for you for tonight. So, I appreciate everything y'all do for us, and everyone have a great week.
Thank you, Sheriff. David Boust.
Hello, I'm David Boust of 4070 Country Overlook Drive in Fort Mill. Thanks for letting me speak with you tonight. I'm here to talk about the stormwater amendment, or ordinance amendment that's being proposed for first reading tonight. It's an incredibly important piece of change that the county is considering, and then I'm going to ask that the county please consider that the financial impact of this new change be studied for what that's going to do to the taxpayers, the property owners, and the people of the business community. We have a lot of concerns. It's not just the floodplains that are identified by FEMA that will be impacted by this, it's the Regent Park neighborhood, it's the maps that Rock Hill has done, it's also the areas adjacent to those areas. So, it's a lot, it's a lot of area in our county, and it is countywide. And also, like, you'll hear a lot that the city of Rock Hill has done a study citywide. The end of, at the end of the day, the city had to go buy several homes that were in the floodplain, the law of unintended consequences. I think it's important to understand what those are prior to making a big change like this. Finally, I'd like to bring your attention to the language regarding the certification of no adverse impact being of no adverse impact, being told by design professionals in our community that this is very onerous, and that it makes the cost of development incredibly expensive when you're in the floodplain. I think we need to take a look at that. Please take the time to look at the whole issue. We're all for improving our community. We already exceed every other county around us, all four counties around York County. We exceed the requirements that they have, and this goes further, adopts a voluntary rule, makes it enforceable. Please be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion for consent?
Second, or motion to, motion to approve?
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. We do not have any public hearing items tonight, so we move straight into our old business. Councills to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 154 Land Development Code and Chapter 155 Zoning Code to define the term property violation and to allow for rezonings and other applications to be withheld from processing for subject properties with an active property violation, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
I want to say part of the reason why I'm supporting this ordinance is because if an applicant has an issue somewhere else that they're neglecting and not wanting to take care of, and the only way that we can make sure that they address it is to hold up something that they're asking us for, I think it's only right to give staff that latitude to be able to use that as leverage, to say, hey, we've been trying to get you to address this issue. You're going to have to take care of it before you get any kind of other permits from us to do anything else, even if it doesn't affect that particular piece of property. I think we should give staff that latitude for that, for that reason. So that's why I'm supporting.
So this requirement, again, I know we've had extensive conversation around this. One of the things that I've run into in, out, in the times that I've spent with people contacting me was around the concerns of people not understanding they're actually violating any type of property law at any point. I think that, you know, the edu, to know, to educate the public to understand what violations are, I think is a first step. I feel this one here, though, to me, is not needed at this time. I think that we have, we have to, to me, at least the experience I've had with a lot of residents, is that a lot of times they're not educated on the upfront in order to know that they're currently in violation. I think before we layer on additional requirements and restrictions, I think we added, to me, make sure we're educating the public even more on existing violations. Not that we're, not that we're going out looking for those violations at all, don't get me wrong, but I think that we need to make sure we're giving people that do have these violations enough time to address them. And I feel, again, at this time, I think this is still a little bit too much of an overreach for the staffing to be able to do to the public. So again, that's where I stand.
Mr. Huckabee?
Yes, so Mr. Aldette, let me just, let me ask you for clarification because I wrote this down as well. So are you saying the property violations such as flood, stormwater, sediment, land elevation, those are, those are issues that concern you? Are those the issues that concern you?
Well, this is, this is outside, this is our code, this is in regards to code violation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Code violation.
Well, and again, tho, those, I mean, you bring up a good point. You do bring up a very good point.
Are those the points you're concerned about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you do bring up a very good point. And again, I think a lot of times, you know, as a government body, I think that we, we again are here to serve the people, and sometimes that we end up having too much power and we, we will put too much pressure, not pressure, but we move too quickly on situations where we should be more of a, in a servant role. So.
Any other comments?
So I look at this a little differently than Councilman Aldette, and that is that I do think we are in a serving role because generally these have come from complaints from a neighbor who's having to look at something that they've maybe been looking at for a very long time. So what this basically does is if a constituent comes to the planning department and they have a complaint, and the county goes out and tells those people they have to clean up whatever it is that is a mess or whatever, it could be anything, it could be anything that they're in violation of, and then that person says, well, we'll just, we're going to rezone, or we're going to, we're going to do this anyway. I don't think they should be relieved of having to clean that up in the meantime because, you know, there's a situation in District 2 right now that was used as an example in our workshop, and it's been going on for, I mean, the guy's been under a violation already for a year and a half, but he's, technically, he's been in violation for many years. So the county went out, and so he had many years of not knowing that he was in violation, and then the county went out and let him know he was in violation, and it's still been a year and a half. So to think that we're not working with people and giving them that opportunity to fix something is not accurate, I don't believe. But what I think is even more important is that now this person, after a year and a half, would like to rezone, and I feel like he should have to clean up his act before he's able to rezone, and I'm sure the neighbors have been looking at his property feel the same way.
Any other comments?
I just want to point out, if, Madam Sheriff, I can make one more comment. This is only when someone is in violation and they're asking to do something else, maybe build a house somewhere else or rezone a different piece of property. It doesn't necessarily have to be with that particular piece of property, and let's be real, not everybody wants to follow the rules. Some people will snub their nose at the violations that they're currently under, and if there's no mechanism, sometimes we've written, from my understanding, staff has written, whether citations or warnings, and the person still doesn't react. But then they want to come into our office and say, hey, I want to rezone this other piece of property over here. For so many months, so many years, maybe, we hadn't had that forcible way to make them do something, but if they want to rezone another piece of property, or maybe, maybe it's the developer who's not taking care, some silk fencing that we're having problems out of, he wants to start up a new development, we're not going, we shouldn't just turn over building permits for him to build somewhere else if he hadn't addressed an issue that we're having enforcement over on the other side of town. So this is what I'm thinking about, that this is when this can be applied to a situation where somebody's basically snubbed their nose at whatever our ordinance say, whether they like it or not, but then they want to come to the county and ask for permission to do something else. I'm saying we could use that as leverage to say, hey, what about this over here before we issue you another permit to do something? We really need to take care of this, whether it's environmental, something that's bugging a neighbor. We need to be able to use that as leverage to make them clean up their act, to do what's right.
That would be an important, excuse me, Madam Sheriff, that would be an important tool to use from the attorney's office as well as the planning and zoning department's office. Currently, the ordinance is written more narrowly than that, and if the will of council is to have it expansive, the way you described, Councilman Roddy, we would just need to amend that in second reading. Happy to look at that and make that amendment.
Any other?
Yes, would it be appropriate for us to ask staff to speak to this ordinance? Because when I read in Exhibit A under property violation, which is what I was referencing to Councilman Aldette, where it states any, any code violation of Chapters 56, public nuisance, building restrictions, flood damage, stormwater management, sediment, land development code, zoning code, anytime I see any, that concerns me. So I'd like for, maybe if staff could speak to that.
If you want to ask a question, if you want to ask a question of staff?
David, can you respond to the concerns that have been mentioned by council tonight?
Yeah, two things, just to clarify, as Michael Kendry stated, this ordinance only pertains to violations on the subject property. It does not include a violation that may be on another property in another location. So understood that that may be what Councilman Roddy would like for it to be, and that's a reasonable, I guess, addition to the ordinance, but as it's written, it only applies to the property that's asked they are requesting to be rezoned. With that being said, currently what we have is the ability to not act on that zoning, rezoning application if there are zoning violations on the property. What we're asking, and we've had some experience with this, is that if the property has other violations on that property that are not related to zoning but are related to stormwater or are related to unsanitary conditions or nuisances, we could also ask that they be corrected prior to moving forward with the rezoning. So it does expand it a little bit to include, to capture all those other violations. It does not, however, expand it to other properties unless council wishes to amend it.
So I was wrong in my assessment.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkins?
Can I ask legal?
You can ask any questions you want.
Michael, on the one instance where we have the so-called builder that has been not handling things exactly properly.
Yes, sir. We would need to amend the ordinance to address the other parcels that, so that would fall into the description of Councilman Roddy, where other parcels a specific violator may have would be prohibited from going forward with them. So we would need to amend it to capture your concerns with that particular builder.
Any other questions or comments from any other council members?
Do we need to amend it to include, how do we go about, if legal's saying we need to add some more language to what I described, do we do this now or?
You could direct us after, if it passes first reading, to direct it to have an amended version come forward.
This is second.
Second reading.
Second reading, apologize. We could amend it before third or give direction to amend it before third reading.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, I'm familiar with what Councilmember Atkins is referencing, and I think that should be addressed because it could have prevented some major heartache for some families with this one in particular entity in York County.
Or simply, excuse me, you can make a motion to approve with the amendment for other parcels to be included, and we can come back with that draft at third.
So can I change the motion now?
Does anybody want to make an amendment?
I will. Okay. I'd like to make an amendment to include other, other properties that may be listed to the individual or company.
Second. Is that clear, is that clarity enough?
It does. You said individual or company, I believe.
We have, we have a new amendment that's been proposed and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment?
Give me the amendment.
The intent of the amendment, as I understand it, is to allow for anyone who has a violation for it to extend to other properties that they own, and to prevent them from moving forward with those properties as well. Mr. Atkins?
But our management will, would this give more overreach of the government, though, in some cases?
Well, I'd say it gives the county more authority to enforce the ordinance on other properties.
Right.
Any other discussion? I, we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment. I don't support the motion in general. I think we've got some issues. We just had a recent workshop where we went through some, some things where we identified the fact that the current notice provisions need to be fixed. We've got an audit that I know the manager is looking at in the planning and zoning. I think they're adding, adding more when we haven't finished up some of the others. I have more folks calling me saying they don't understand the notice provision process, and so I think I won't support the main motion, and I won't support the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hand so I can see?
Of the amendment.
That's to include the additional properties.
Yeah, the amendment, then we'll have to go to the main.
I'll vote yes to the amendment, but I'm actually voting no to the, to the ordinance.
As it's written.
All right, so the amendment fails.
Amendment fails.
We're back now to the main motion. All those, and I think the motion on the table is to approve, approve this.
That's correct.
All those in favor say aye. All those against, say no.
No.
All right, so motion fails. Move now to new business.
Motion to deny?
Yep. Do we need to have that?
I would say you need the main motion, yes.
We've already voted on the main motion. The main motion failed. Do we need a motion to deny, or is that?
It should be.
No, the motion failed.
Motion dies.
All right.
Motion was to approve, correct?
Correct. Move now to item one under new business. Councills to consider initiating a rezoning pursuant to York County Code of Ordinances 155.1137A1 to rezone tax map parcel 723000010204052324254750606163646566757880818385 to the Outdoor Amusement Zoning District as an implementation of the Exit 9 in Carwin's Boulevard Master Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to ask where all of the property owners notified of this council-initiated rezoning?
They'll be notified before the process starts. They have not been notified as of yet. So they'll, it'll go through the normal rezoning process, which requires a notification and all that. This is the first step where council is instructing staff to initiate the process.
Okay, and there'll be plenty of time for you to hear from them before it comes back.
Yeah, so the standard three readings, public hearing, and everything still has to be pursued.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two, councills to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 151 Flood Damage Prevention to Adopt the Regent Park Flood Study and Accompanying Maps to Adopt the City of Rock Hill's Flood Prone Sheets and Area Maps to Amend and Adopt Standards Above the National Flood Insurance Program's Minimum Standards Based on a No Adverse Impact Approach to Floodplain Management, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think that the points that were brought up earlier, I think, kind of expand on, or hit the heart of where I have concerns with this. When you start, to me, I see a possible impact to people owning existing properties. I see an impact to the value of their property. I feel that this is, again, above and beyond where the county should be going. I think this is an example of overreach here. I do not want to put an impact on people that have existing property of this to be layered on top of it, where people have invested their funds, their hard-earned money into a piece of property for us to create a law that ends up impacting them and damaging their life savings. I will never support this.
Mr. Roddy?
I see tonight we're using the word government overreach real loose tonight. If I owned a home and it was potentially in a floodplain, I certainly would want to know about it before all of a sudden now I'm hit with, with some waters and flood in the area. I don't, I don't use the term overreach nearly as much as some people do, but if this is going to be some kind of a notification process to homeowners or property that's maybe undeveloped now, if someone goes in and develops it, and we had some kind of knowledge that, hey, this was potentially in a floodplain, and we don't designate that area of concern because there's insurance that people can obviously take, but if they're not in a floodplain, who takes out flood insurance if they're not in a floodplain? Maybe I'm on the wrong vein here with what this is doing, and maybe staff can clarify, but I think this was kind of putting a notation on some areas that could possibly be in a 100-year floodplain. Can staff kind of clear this, sum this up?
It does recognize some mapping that we have done as well as some mapping that the city of Rock Hill has done, and and, uh, does a place of additional, but it goes beyond that and replaces, and places some other conditions and requirements on the property. So in other words, uh, the developer would have to do more in order to continue to develop in that floodplain so there's no adverse impact to the people already there. So it does add some additional requirements in, along with the notice of, uh, pub, publication of the maps and adoption of the maps. So, does that answer your question?
So if we don't do this, a developer, a developer can go a couple blocks over, develop, and cause an adverse effect to my home if I'm two blocks away?
Yeah, and, uh, as I understand it, and I'm not the technical person on this issue, but as long as they, the impact to that area does not raise the floodplain more than a foot, then they are able to do that work in the floodplain. Uh, we, the, the proposed ordinance would calculate that to where there's no impact allowed by proposed development in that area that would impact the buildings that are already there. So, I mean, we could talk, again, I'd, I'd like to provide you some additional details on that outside of the meeting, but that is the, the basics of it.
Because we, we've seen development happen up the road across the street, and a few years later, all of a sudden, somebody over here is having a real adverse effect. If this is something that would have prevented that, I hope that we would definitely do it because it's, it's a layer protection. It's making sure that, you know, nobody goes in and develops upstream that causes something to the neighbors or adjacent developments. So hopefully we're not, we're not backing off of something that would have protected existing developments, only to allow cheaper or a developer not to do certain things or raise the standard. So, I haven't had any issue with this, but I've seen some graphics on this screen, many, many meetings where someone years later has had an issue out of development that, that has happened that maybe we didn't know anything about it. But now if we're saying that we know there's a possible issue that could come from a development, and we don't make them do certain steps, I think we're doing those surrounding areas a real disservice, but...
But, Tim, if I respond back, I mean, there...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's talk.
Yeah.
Then you can respond to everybody on Tom.
Yeah, so...
Let me go, then you can...
Okay, go ahead.
Let's go down the line.
Yeah.
So I think that it's important, um, you know, the, the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting we met, and Mark Boland did a great presentation to us on what this was. It's, it's very shocking to see how this land has changed over time, and maybe that's because of some of the growth, um, that's happened there. This is first reading, though, and I don't know what those people, I mean, if that were my area, I'd feel like I needed to go door-to-door and have them here tonight. And, and I don't know that these people know what's happening. Um, I would love to hear from them. I think a second, a second reading, or, you know, for us to know what, what's been done, have they been notified? They're not here tonight, so I don't think that they are aware of this and what the impact may be to them if we do it, or what it may be to them if we don't do it. And so I would like to pass first reading and, and have those people involved. There, there are not that many homes. However, there is a development that is looking to, to come adjacent to this. And I think we need to, to be cognizant of that and know, again, you know, Jonathan's not here tonight, but I think we should know what, what is the impact of that developer? If, if we don't do this, what is the impact of that developer building there? And what is the impact of knowing this and doing this? And, and then what, what limitations does that developer have? So I think, I think when I look at this, I look at this as, this is, we're, we're about to make a decision for, um, some people that aren't aware and may have a different, um, impact if they know the, may have a different interpretation of this, or, um, if, if they know the pros and cons of it. So I, I wouldn't want to not do this, um, on their behalf.
Okay. Can I say something before you?
Yep.
And then you can answer.
Yeah.
Blow it all out. Okay. So, um, I know a lot about this, where I live. And, um, first of all, when we had our meeting with Mark, I thought that he, you know, there were a lot of concerns that night, and he was gonna come back and make some additional, um, research. Are you, do you guys remember that? Okay, so I, I don't know if he has done that, if this is, um, what exactly, where, where his additional research stands. So I don't, I really would hate to, um, turn this down and not hear from Mark again, and also from the people that it does affect, uh, because we're getting, um, just, it's not like an everyday thing, but I do know of a lady who, her property was flooded about a month ago. And so is the thing that you don't let these people know. I mean, we're all about transparency. Um, I think that they need to, to know that this is an issue. And then the other thing is, um, to not have areas that a developer does not even know that he is very near a 100-year floodplain is another whole part of this. And, and the way that Mark explained it is, once you develop in those floodplains, it pushes that water over to areas that already has houses in it. And so it floods, it has more of a, an impact on the area beside of the development that has developed near the floodplain. Do you understand what I'm saying? So the water is pushed out. So that is a big concern for neighborhoods that have been established that maybe have a little problem with flooding right now, but not a major. But if that land is developed, then they're going to be having major flooding. So that's, um, I mean, it's a, it's a very big concern, and I understand what you're saying, Tom, about, um, with the flooding, um, National Flood Insurance Program and, but... You know, there is this side, and then there's this side. So you got to make that decision for yourself. What?
I'll share quickly. I'm going to support first reading on this, but I'm concerned. I, um, I see the logic behind the free board section that we've read about and that was shared with us at workshop, but I have some concerns, too. But I think some of my concerns go beyond this particular ordinance, which I hear other council members speaking to quietly tonight, respectfully tonight. So, you know, I'm going to support first reading, but I also need some more information, as you're asking for from staff, before I could vote yes in a second reading.
Any other comments?
You go.
You haven't been yet. Your turn.
Well, I, I just wonder, I mean, if it was already in the FEMA floodplain zone, and basically, management in my right, y'all are just wanting to broaden that?
Well, they're not, the properties we're talking about are not considered to be in the FEMA floodplain zone. They're, uh, they would be included in our own floodplain based on, uh, maps, uh, studies that have been done to determine that they are prone to flooding.
But at the workshop we were at, did they not show us outline and call it was in the FEMA?
I think we represented that it was in a floodplon, prone area, but not a FEMA. That's, that's the, that's the issue we were bringing to light, is that FEMA doesn't map every square mile of flood-prone areas. Some of those go unmapped. And when we map them, or the City of Rock Hill maps them, then, uh, this would just state that, that we would recognize those as floodzone, flood-prone areas.
But that's a concern because it's flood-prone, and that's one of the things I want to learn.
Well, that was my question. How did they ever get to build there anyway? Because I mean, I got wetland and flood zones on my farm, and, I mean, it's clearly on my land, the draft, and I don't understand how they ever got approved for them to build there to start with.
So, I yell something. Yeah, I just want to kind of piggyback off my comments and, and, and I, you know, the county supplies has maps to say that this area is prone to flooding. So if you've got a new contractor going in, they're going to see that, and they're going to know this is prone to flooding. All right? But that's one thing, as opposed to deeming it FEMA, FEMA-restricted land, which not only it's open land, but also land that property owners have homes on, may have businesses on, and that automatically puts them in a different category. So to turn around for them to sell that property afterwards, if it's been deemed as a FEMA, as opposed to, in the past, they knew it flooded, so they had to get flood insurance. There's two different variables there, and again, when you deem something as bringing it to this level, we're looking at impact on existing home values, on existing businesses, and all at the same time. If somebody buys a piece of property currently without this program, they can look on a map of the county, and they can see it is prone to flood, and they can address it appropriately. So that's my stance. Thank you.
We had a very lengthy workshop about this, and at the workshop, um, I think there was much discussion from council that asked staff to reach out to the property owners and speak to them at length before it even came back to us. So I think, honestly, we shouldn't have first reading, and I, the way it's written now, I can't support what, what is in here now. And I'm worried that having first reading on this may cause some damage in and of itself. I mean, what it looks to me like, and I've spent a good bit of time looking at this because I do care and want to make sure that we do the right thing, but we've already adopted the FEMA in our, in FIP standards. This expands that, and it applies to property that's not even in the purported floodzone. I mean, if you look at the ordinance itself, it specifically applies to properties that are adjacent and aren't even in the property. I think that's a concern. I'm real concerned about the residents because most of this property that's in this area, and it's not just this, um, this specific neighborhood. This ordinance applies countywide, and it extends the regulations. And my biggest concern is that this is going to decrease property values. This is going to require disclosures, um, and, and it's going to be a problem for the homeowners that are there already. Um, I think that the better approach would have been to reach out to them, talk through this, and, and then narrow the scope of this to, to address the concerns once they're involved. So, um, I think there's also some provisions in here that, um, go to the five-year, 500-year flood area and... And the storage or stockpiles of materials is really going to put these folks in, at a real big disadvantage. They already have homes that exist there, and I think there was some even conversation that is there a problem with them storing, um, Roundup in their, in their garage? And is this going to make it harder for them to do anything that's on their property currently? So I really think, um, that what should have happened, and I, is that after that workshop, it should have, should have gone to that community first before it even came here for first reading. So I don't support, um, first reading. All those in, I guess the current motion on the...
Was to deny.
The motion was to deny it.
So if you don't support first reading, does it come back? How does it come back?
I think, here, here are options. I'll throw this out there. If anybody wants to make the amendment or change the motion, move to defer this item. If there's not, if, if you're supporting it, and, and it looks to me like there's a, let's defer first reading.
Motion to defer this item.
I think we have to have that for the main motion maker. Who made the motion?
Tom did. I think at this point, we probably, yeah, I don't think we're going to, um, because I know you are looking to support it first. So, okay. I'm going to modify my motion, um, to defer this for additional research and to, um, also present information to the public, uh, that, of the homeowners.
Second.
So the motion is to defer until such time as they've had an opportunity to speak with the community, and it's not going to come back to council until they've had a chance to do that?
And I, I think we need to hear from staff. Wouldn't there some question that staff was going to get back also?
Yeah, question, questions.
Someone mentioned that staff was supposed to follow up?
Mm-hmm. At our workshop, we had a lot of discussion about some things that I think it was directed at, uh, specifically to the folks that are in that area.
And I'm thinking there's so many unanswered questions, deferring is the best solution tonight.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is deferred.
So can we get a copy of all that you've got? Because we don't...
It's the or, it, it was in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet. All right. Where's my agenda? I, I was told they're very separate, totally distinct. Uh, let me get back to my agenda. Counts to consider first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter 152 Stormwater Management and Sediment Control Code to provide for evaluation, assessment, and protection of surface water, impoundments, ponds, and lake coves impacted or threatened with impact by off-site sedimentation from land disturbance activities to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related there too.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This just, this just allows us to get a, um, before and after, um, some of the, um, sedimentation that might, um, occur. So, um, just, just to be able to measure that. There, there have been times when, you know, you want to talk about just muddy water versus siltation. So this, this just helps us be able to, um, measure that. This, this is not, obviously, for every, um, development, but those that are, that are on waterfront would certainly, um, benefit from, from this. And some in the past would have benefited from this.
I, I would just say leave a workshop. I had concerns over this particular ordinance, and I still do. Yeah, I also have concerns over this, too. I think this one should be deferred for more, for more information. I think there's existing, um, structure on the books already that address these issues. Um, I think, again, this, this to me is, um, something that needs to be deferred. I don't think it's something we need to incorporate.
Let's just kill it. We, well, I mean, we've deferred, it's been to committee.
Let's kill it.
Kill it, just kill it. It's been to committee already. It's been to two workshops, and it's been through council twice, and, and we either don't understand it, or we don't like it, or we'll never have enough information about it. So I'm going to change my motion to deny.
Deny, okay. Who, second?
Current motion on the table is to deny. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counts to approve contract amendment with DeVita and Associates, Inc. of Charlotte, North Carolina for construction management, management tasks and additional design and engineering services related to the construction services for the HVAC replacement and upgrades at York County Heckle Complex as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program in the amount of $382,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number five, counts to approve contract amendment with DeVita Associates, DeVita and Associates of Charlotte, North Carolina for construction managed, management tasks and additional design and engineering services related to the construction management services for the HVAC replacement and upgrades at the York County Planning Facility as part of the coronavirus and local fiscal recovery funds program in the total amount of $107,300.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number six, county council to authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county a pending application for an amendment to the Allison Creek Development Agreement as an owner of effective property pursuant to the terms of the agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. First of all, it's a District Two item, so it would be great if I could make the motion when something comes up for District Two. That's number one. There is some discussion about this. I'd like to just explain what this is.
Fair enough. Just wanted to get the motion on the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Clover School District actually in need of, um, a change to the 2008 Developers Agreement for Daimler. And, um, I was going to talk a little bit about this once I got into the non, non-member, um, non-agenda comments, but I wanted to go ahead and say this because I think it's fitting for, for this time. Um, this is a situation that York County is in, specifically District Two, but all of York County and actually all of South Carolina. Um, this is a developers agreement that was signed in 2008, and it was to end in, I think, 2026. Is that right, David? I think, was it 2026? Okay, we don't know exactly, but we think 2026. Okay. Okay, we don't know exactly, but we think 2026, okay. The school district is, is one of the sites in that development. There are, I think, seven, seven parcels there and they were, this developer's agreement was done because Dangler was gonna move their corporate office here. Personally, I feel like when Dangler decided that they were not coming here, that that developer's agreement should have ended at that time. And it would have made a world of difference for us because in that developer's agreement that was signed in 2008, there is a minimum of 3,700 homes required. So because of some topography and some issues, for example, Westport that is building now has reduced their number of homes, they've taken off their apartments, they've reduced their number of homes from 1,200 and something to 842. But they are able to come in and do anything and everything under the old 2008 code. And I can tell you that in the last, in the last 20 years, 15 years, we've made a lot of improvements to our code and they don't, they don't fall under that. So we've been reluctant to, to allow these parcels, and I've been opposed to these individual parcels being able to come before the planning department and then council to say, hey, we, we just need you to just tweak this little thing for us or just tweak this little thing for us. And every, at some point in time, most of the parcels have, have come and asked for something and most of those have been denied or maybe they asked for five or seven things and they got three or four. In all fairness though, and, and what I've asked of Clover School District and several of those other parcel members is that they come back to the table and let's renegotiate this. And one of the biggest impacts and one of the most positive things for this would be that those 3,700 homes, which won't equal that because they're not gonna be able, ever able to build that many, but they're excluded from impact fees. So that's, that's a lot of money. And I would love for Clover School District to get behind me. I'll make my formal request again right now. I've made it, I made it in February of 2019. I've talked to board members and I've talked to current board chair and Dr. Quinn and this past August, I talked to the South Carolina Association of Counties. And what they would like to do, and we will need council support to do this, is, part of our issue is that you think 2026 is not that far away, but in 2011, the state legislature extended all developer's agreements in the state to 2035. So there's a chance now that South Carolina Association of Counties attorneys would like to speak with Michael Kendry. We would have to give him our permission to say, yes, we as York County would like to have that changed back to the way it was. And that could possibly mean that the developers, the developer's agreement that we are now looking at, after all of those homes will be built and everything will have filled in down there and we'll all be sitting in traffic, giving each other the finger, you know, we've got an opportunity now, if Clover School District and York County will come together, let's ask the state, to ask the state legislature to change it back to 2026 and it'll make a huge difference. This is a simple something. What this does is this avoids a connection to East Liberty Hill Road, I think it's East Liberty Hill Road, that's very much needed. But that's, this is an example of where that developer's agreement is impacting something, you know, just unintended consequences from 15 years ago. So I would love to have council support, first of all, to approve this tonight, but second of all, to, to have Michael Kendry and the two attorneys that I have their names with South Carolina Association, they would like to make that change statewide and they would like for York County to help them do that.
I think at this point, the motion on the table and that is to, is limited to the request here. I'm not necessarily, I mean, we have to keep it simply to approval of that and then the other issues have to be taken up separately. You agree with that?
I do.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on the item in front of us now? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee and other reports, doesn't look like we have any citizen concerns or not. Okay, Ms. Love?
So the Finance and Operations Committee met today at 5:30. Present were Councilmen Aldette and Atkins. We had to, we had to consider applications for service for the Keep York County Beautiful. And basically what we were doing on that, because we've had some discussions about changing some boards to, limiting those to seven, we had, I had a District Two empty spot, but I also had a great person, Marie McFadden, who does a great job. She's always out picking out litter and on her own trying to keep York County beautiful. So I just wanted to move her from an at-large seat to that vacant District Two seat. So just so we would be kind of ahead of the game on that if that comes up again. And then we had the recommendation for the Board of Assessment Appeals for District Five and that was for Harry Johnson for first term. And then we approved the minutes for the previous October 2nd Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Councilmember New None Agenda Comments?
I'll just say real quick, as the month of September starts to come to a close, just remind everybody about breast cancer. What did I say, September? Oh, I need to roll my calendar. The month of October is about to come to a close. Just remind everybody about supporting the different breast cancer awareness and cancer awareness walks and fundraisers and stuff like that because these walks or those walks help so many families that, that are facing some difficult times. So that's why I wore my, my breast cancer awareness tie and I got on my pink shirt tonight for, for breast cancer awareness. So just kinda putting it out that we support these different causes.
I'd just like to add to our next executive session, the discussion that we just. We'd like to add to the next executive session, the discussion that we just had regarding the South Carolina Association and the developer's agreements.
I don't have a committee report, but I do have committee requests. So I chair the Health and Environmental Protection Committee. Councilmembers Aldette and Roddy sit on the committee. And so I'm bringing a request to the table. We've had conversations with Mike Moore, Catherine Jones, Kevin Madden, we discussed, and David Husby, we discussed our parks. And we would like to, we'd like for our committee to work with staff to put an RFP together to take a look at the short and long-range plans for our parks in York County. So we just need consent from council to move forward.
Is there any objection from council to allow that to go to committee? Hearing none, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we move into executive session?
We, we need, we need to, zoning planning needs to schedule a committee meeting so that Jones can update us on the rewrite some of the language with the tattoo establishments. We would have done it, but you were out, so let's get that on our radar.
Okay, all right. So I have one, one more comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Roddy, thank you for bringing up Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And not a lot of people know this, but I am a survivor of five years. And so that means a lot to me and especially you look good in pink.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, just a reminder that we have two items that we have to discuss at workshop. That's the, the two that we just discussed at our last workshop. So we had to follow up on those two, 660 and the grant tree ordinance, separation uses and the grant reordance.
Do we have any other? Anyone else?
Yeah, real quick. So the presentation by Sheriff Tolson, as you all saw, was excellent tonight. One of the things on the county website, the sheriff's office, is a program where they, there's a program where you can text to 911, okay? So if you're in a sense, you're in a case of emergency where you can't make a phone call, text to 911 is a, is a great access to share with your families. Now, there is a video on the county website to, again, talks about it, but again, text to 911 will get you to 911 if you can't make a call in case of emergency. And then Fight for the Family 5K Race is coming up at Allison Creek on Saturday, October 28th, a great event and a great fundraising. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion for executive session?
Motion for executive session. We've got two items here, personal matters, contractual matter, county manager search and receipt of illegal advice litigation update.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will go into executive session.
Let's do it, let's do it, let's do it.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Yeah, one motion to authorize the county attorney to retain outside counsel as discussed in executive session.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.